Thank you, Sheriff. Let's start with a prayer from Commissioner Gillum, please.
Before we pray, does anybody have any requests across the audience? Not, let's pray. Well, we thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, for your many blessings on not only us, but our community have been so good to us. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us the opportunity to serve such great people across this county. Or we pray that you be with us during the proceedings. Lord, help us do everything with honesty and integrity and do our best to serve the people that we love so much. Most of all, I thank you for dying on the cross for a center like me and for making a way of escape for us. And we'll be thanking for everything in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge to the flag, Commissioner Roach.
Teaching salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may be seated. Thank you all for being here. Called meetings in order and want to welcome a new Commissioner Bobby Jinks is here with us. Welcome, Bobby. We're glad to have you.
Everybody needs to sign in.
Everybody needs to sign in on their pad. Ladies roll call.
Well, I had an issue with Mr. Jinks. Can I look at your, uh, we don't have an eye. Two sets, we got it. We can, we can mark your hands while you work on that. Okay.
Thanks a lot. First meeting, you may start.
See y'all got anything you need to do.
Wake up. You're fitting right in. Thank you. Now to read the conflict of interest statement, our County Attorney Allen Cowell.
Commissioners Roach and Commissioners Britton wish to acknowledge they may have a direct or indirect actual potential conflict of interest regarding matters which may be coming before the Commission tonight, and they agree to act accordingly. Commissioner Roach, do you so agree?
I do.
Commissioner Britton, do you so agree?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Commendations and recognitions. I want to mention that tomorrow evening at the Connolly Farm, there's going to be the Annual Republican Barbecue in Bluegrass. Everybody's welcome to come. It's free. Come out and talk to everybody. It's usually a pretty good crowd. Lyndon, did you have?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I need to recognize Attorney Larry Boyd at this time.
Come on up, Larry.
My name is, like she says, Larry Boyd, and I've been practicing law here for 27 years. So I've been asked to appear today on behalf of Holson Electric. And some of you may have already were at the Budget Committee meeting the other night when we had Jimmy Sandlin. I'm not Jimmy Sandlin, and I'm not an electrical engineer, but I am going to try to answer some of the questions or give you some facts of some of the issues that I think that he tried to cover the other night. Now, I have a little bit of congestion because of pollen. It's been bad the last few days, but one of the issues is, it seems to be, the issue of whether or not the customers of and Holson Connect ought to be paying a franchise fee. And that's been, been an issue, been coming on, and there's been a lot of talk about it. And our position is that it's time that the franchise fee is not approved by the state legislative act, which is House Bill 4087, Senate Bill 456. Actually, what the service that Holson Electric and Holson Connect provide is a streaming service. Now Comcast and Comcast and Charter, all are video services. They pay a franchise fee. Holson Connect does not pay a franchise fee, and that's, we think that under the statute, they were exempt from being required to pay a franchise fee. But there's been a lot of other mistakes or misunderstanding, not a mistake, but a misunderstanding about some of the issues of what Holson Connect does do. First of all, there's 14,000 users of Holson Connect in Hawkins County, Tennessee, and part of Hamlet County. 14,000. Out of that 14,000, and a lot of people think all of them use, all of them use video or all of them get TV. Only 1,900 people out of that 14,000 gets video, which means the other group of people only get telephone services and internet. That has nothing to do with the issue of the video service or streaming service that Holson Connect serves or provides for Hawkins County. It is a significant difference. And one of the interesting facts is, Marstown is a party to this lawsuit. Marstown has three users of our streaming service. They have three users. Out of all these others, they have three users, but yet they're a party to this. What we feel like is important to the, sorry. What we feel like is very important is that Holson Connect and Holson Electric furnish the fiber optic service that goes along all the poles across the county. But the problem is that those fiber optics, the poles are furnished by Holson Connect, those fiber optic cables are furnished by Holson Connect, and we pay $1,200,000 for the right to put those, that fiber optic cable on the, on the poles across the county. The other thing is, we pay this past year, well, and that's been since 2020, and this past year Hawkins County Cooperative paid $5,600, $5,600,000 in property taxes since 2015. We paid 1.2 million, as I said, in property taxes on the fiber plant that's a part of the video system. So the point I'm making is, there's only 1,900 people in Hawkins County, Tennessee that uses streaming services. And under this Senate bill that I spoke of, the House and Senate bill, I spoke of, streaming services are, we believe, are exempt from that. It's only meant to affect places like Comcast and Charter that service and provide video. So my argument to you is that we're paying more than we should be paying, and if they were to pass an exercise, I mean, a franchise tax on Hawkins County Connect, Hawkins Connect, or Holson Connect, you would be paying twice that amount. In other words, and that would be something that's actually, if you do, it'd be passed on to your consumer. So we think that there needs to be a lot of thought being given to that because of the fact that we feel that, we feel that there's a lot of money already being paid to Hawkins County for the services that they're providing through this fiber optic cable that's being provided across the county. And we pretty much now service every place we can service that needs, that looks for internet or telephone service in the county. So again, I am not, I'm not Jimmy Sandlin, and I'm not an engineer, and I don't know some of the issues that I'm sure he could probably answer. But if there's any questions that you have, I'll do my best to answer them, but he's better qualified to answer than I am. But like I say, the main thing I want to point out is, 93% of the users of Holson Connect are internet and telephone service and do not include TV. So we feel like that, you know, any effort to place a franchise tax on Holson Connect would be a mistake at this time. And let me say this, we're not the only place in Tennessee that's having this argument, and it's probably going to end up in the Tennessee Supreme Court at some time or other in the near future. And I know other counties are going through this. So the point I'm making is, probably wise thing to do right now, but it would be wait and see what happens when it does get to the Tennessee Supreme Court, and then you can deal with it at that time. So I would ask the Commission to take a long look at this and maybe tonight, either possibly pull it or table it until a later time, until we see what is going to happen across the state of Tennessee. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer it. But that's what I would hope you would consider from the standpoint of the taxes paid by the county for the fiber optic use, which is 1.2 million, plus the fact it would be a double, it would be a double tax if you also, if they had to pay a franchise tax also.
Any questions for Mr. Boyd?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So I'm the sponsor of this resolution, Mr. Boyd, and I appreciate you coming down here, meeting with us tonight. I'll save most of my comments for when we get to the resolution, but I do want to ask you this one thing. Are the co-op boards' meetings public? Are they open to the public?
As far as I know, they're open to the public. I don't know, I've never had that question asked before, but I know we have the end of meeting, and they're open to the public, and you can ask any questions you want to there.
Of course, yes. But so the monthly meetings are open to the public?
As far as I know. I mean, I bet somebody else would have to answer that. I've not always been the county, I mean, I'm not a county, I've not always been the attorney for the board.
Okay. And do you know when their meetings are?
They're usually the second Tuesday of the, usually the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Where are they and what time?
So they're at the Holson Electric office. But I can't answer that. They need to ask somebody, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I did, so to be clear, I did call the cooperative and try to ask that question. I was actually on hold for nearly a half hour and got forwarded to an answering service who was unable to answer my question. But, so that's why I wanted to ask you here tonight, but I appreciate it, Mr. Boyd. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chad, do you know if they pay any fees to any of the channels like HBO, Cineplex, Star?
Well, all those are Hulu and some of these other channels, they're a streaming service like Holson Connect is. No, they don't pay any fees to that.
Well, I know, I've got Holson Connect internet, but I can't get any of the channels that they're advertising that I can pay and subscribe to through them without paying that fee unless I go in and individually subscribe to each one of those channels through Hulu or one of the other providers.
According to the information.
Basically, I would have to, what I'm getting at is, I would have to pay a subscription to them to get those, on top of what I pay for internet.
Again, I'm not, I'm not an electrical engineer, but I know, I know that YouTube, YouTube TV, Hulu, and some of those other, you know, multitude of other streaming services provide that, but now who, what you have to pay to get to it, I don't know. Again, that's a little beyond my field.
Okay, I'm done. Civil Trent.
Mr. Boyd, if we waited until it got to the Tennessee Supreme Court, would we be able to then join the lawsuit?
Yes, you'd be able to join the lawsuit.
At that time?
Right. Or the lawsuit probably could be delayed until we get an answer from the Tennessee Supreme Court.
So, but that would be quite some time.
It could be a while. Yes, it could be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I do have one more.
Okay.
To be clear, the issue that would be going to the Supreme Court would be deciding whether or not things such as Hulu and Netflix have to pay these franchise fees.
Whether it would be decided whether it'd be a streaming service where there would be no franchise tax, or whether or not there would be a franchise tax on the streaming service.
Correct. And so I think, while I do hear your point on that, on that particular thing, it's actually a separate issue because our, this particular lawsuit stance has really nothing to do with whether, we're saying that you're not a streaming service, right? That's, or not we, the parties of the lawsuit that have joined us far are saying that you're not a streaming service, they're saying that you're a cable provider, right?
That's the argument, yes.
That's right. So my point is really, and I would say this to you, Commissioner Trent, civil, I would say that the, in my opinion, that suit that may make it to the Tennessee Supreme Court, honestly, isn't that relevant because there's a disagreement between us and you over whether you're a streaming service or a cable provider. So it's unrelated case.
Well, there's no question, we're not, we're not a cable provider. We're a streaming service. I mean, that's, that's why we have the fiber optics streaming across the, our poles across the Hawkins County and part of Hamlet County.
Right. I'll save the remainder of my comments for when we get to the resolution. Commissioner.
I've never met Mr. Sandlin. Is he in the audience?
No, sir. He's, he's, he and Jeff Ringley were on a trip somewhere in his, Mr. Sandlin's airplane, and they got socked in because of the weather, and they couldn't get back. I got, that's the reason I'm up here. I wouldn't have been here except for the fact he got, he got trapped in the weather, and they couldn't get here.
Okay, anything else? Dylan, would you like to say anything? Robin, go ahead.
Mr. Boyd, in the budget meeting, I asked Mr. Sandlin if you had to take Holston Connect to have Holston TV, and he told me no, that you could use any kind of internet provider.
One of which is you can use your cellphone.
Well, so let's just say for, if someone come into the Commission meeting and they wanted to sit here and use the county's Wi-Fi to watch Holston TV, then according to what he said would be true. So in his customer, in the customer agreement for Holston Connect, it says that the customer would sign, I also understand that monthly subscription of internet service from Holston Connect is required to attain subscription to Holston TV. So that kind of goes against what he told us in the budget meeting. Is that, can you elaborate anymore on that?
I can't answer that. I wish I could, but I, I'm not in a position to answer that.
All right. Thank you.
I'll give you the same answer. I hear all these presidential candidates say when they want to sidestep something.
Anything else for Mr. Boyd? Dylan, would you like to speak now, or do you want to wait till the actual resolution?
I can just wait. If any questions come up, then I'll.
Okay. All right. Moving forward. The following reports and appointments have been filed and are to be read into the minutes of the September 23rd, 2024 Commission meeting. Hawkins County, Tennessee, Office of the Sheriff, Annual Financial Report for the Year Ending June 30th, 2024. Appointment of Kevin Keaton of the law firm Point and Keaton, PC in Rogersville, to be the delinquent tax attorney for Hawkins County beginning September 3rd, 2024 and ending on September 3rd, 2025. Appointment of James R. Miley to fill the office of Commissioner of the Mooresburg Utility District of Hawkins County with term ending December 31st, 2026. And the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury has acknowledged receipt of a certified copy of the 2025 budget, and you have a copy of that letter in front of you as well. All right, let's move on to approval of the minutes. Got a motion from Commissioner Barker, second Commissioner Palmer, to approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
14 yes.
All right, minutes have been approved from last month's meeting. Thank you. Now's the time for public comments, but as I understand it, there's nobody signed in. So if not, we're going to move right along. Okay. We'll move to Resolution 2024-09-01, introduced by Commissioner Barker.
To the members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in regular session met this 23rd day of September, 2024, resolution in reference appointment of Mark DeWitt as Chairman of the Hawkins County Legislative Body, whereas the Chairman of the Hawkins County Legislative Body is now due for appointment, and Mark DeWitt, County Mayor and current Chairman of the Hawkins County Legislative Body is qualified to serve. Now therefore be it resolved that Mark DeWitt, County Mayor, be appointed to Chairman of the Hawkins County Legislative Body with the term beginning September the 23rd, 2024, until the 4th Monday in September, 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Barker, second from Commissioner Gillum. Are there any comments, questions, nominations from the floor? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please.
13 yes, one abstain.
Thank you all very much. 2024-09-02, introduced by Commissioner Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in regular session met the 23rd day of September, 2024, resolution in reference appointment of Nancy Barker as Chairman Pro Tem of the Hawkins County Legislative Body, whereas the Office of Chairman Pro Tem of the Hawkins County Legislative Body is now due for appointment, and Commissioner Nancy Barker is qualified to serve. Now therefore be it resolved that Nancy Barker be appointed as Chairman Pro Tem of the Hawkins County Legislative Body with a term beginning September the 23rd, 2024, until the 4th Monday in September, 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Kern, second Commissioner Davis. Any questions, comments, and nominations from the floor? Commissioner Alvis.
I don't plan on supporting this, and I'm voting no on behalf of my veteran friend, Gus Johnson.
Anybody else? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
11 yes, one no, two abstain.
All right, motion carries. I guess I missed reading into the minutes the Hawkins County Board of Education report?
Go ahead, Mr. Barker.
Okay, it's in here somewhere?
Yeah, there's one. Everybody's got.
Everybody's got a copy of their report. Is it for this quarter?
Fourth quarter. Fourth quarter.
Okay, fourth quarter. All right, that's the only action we need on that, just to read it in. All right, 2024-09-03, introduced by, I didn't put anybody on here. Who wants to do this? Go ahead, Dean.
Oh, you want me to read it? To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman, and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners met in regular session, 23rd day of September, 2024, resolutions in reference to approval of appointments of Commissioners to committees for the current fiscal year, whereas the committees and members shown on the attached spreadsheet are being presented for approval by the Commission Chairman to the Hawkins County Commission now. Now therefore be it resolved, members, committee members are shown on the attached sheet are approved by the County Commission. I so move.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Alvis, second from Commissioner Gibson, and you've got the list attached to that. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. So I really appreciate having that list of committees and everyone who's on the committees. I'm going to follow up with a question that I had last month where I stood at the front there. Will these meetings be posted somewhere publicly, like the county website?
On the county website, yes.
Okay, is that going to be the clerk's website?
No, it would be HawkinsCountyTN.gov.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Jeff Barrett, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, I've got two questions. The first question, depending on the results of the vote, will these committees, will all of these committees be set up and officers elected, reelected, or whatever by the November meeting?
Officers will be elected at the first meeting of each, of each committee. But the committees are set up, they're the same as they were last year, except for Bobby Jinks, he's filled in for the openings. But the officers will be elected at the first meeting of each, of each committee.
Okay. My second question I've got involves the Delinquent Tax Committee. On this resolution, it shows Commissioner Thacker of the 3rd District being on the Delinquent Tax Committee, but if you go over to the next resolution, Resolution Number Four, Delinquent Tax Committee, it shows Commissioner Alvis.
Right. I was going to correct that when this other resolution came up. Commissioner Barrett, there, on the Delinquent Tax Resale of Land, 3rd District on that should be Charlie Thacker, I didn't update it.
Okay.
Okay, is that your question? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question on the list of, from beyond the committees, it says term beginning 10/1/2025?
Yeah, it was a misprint, sorry.
Okay.
24. These things tend to slip by you, even if you've got four or five sets of eyes looking at it, you know, it just goes, it just slips by. All right, anything else? Questions, comments on?
I've got one coming.
Yes, Commissioner Barker.
I just want to comment, I've had a lot of people ask, and I think it's been asked in here before, these committees only meet when it's necessary, that's why we don't have a steady meeting each month. We figure it out, and if we met every month, every Commissioner on them, like some people have suggested we do, it costs us about between $75,000 and $80,000 a year. So a long time ago, as Commissioners, we all agreed that we would meet as an on-need basis, and those are all posted, and they're all sunshine, so it's out there quick enough for everybody to be able to attend a meeting if you want to do so. So I just want to clarify that, because a lot of people thought we had set dates for each one of these meetings, and we do not.
Correct. There is a set date for the Budget Committee.
Yes.
That's, and the Public Safety meets quarterly. That's about the only regular ones, but we'll put them on the website. Any other questions?
Mayor, if your board on in May, whenever we have an application.
Correct. Have an application, the Beer Board will meet. We try, we try and conserve as much money as we can on these, and when, when there's something that really needs to be voted on, we'll get the committee together, like the Beer Board, when there's an application, they will meet. Any other questions? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
13 yes, one abstain.
Okay, thank you all. Resolution 2024-09-04, and as we said, we need to, we need to correct the 3rd District on Delinquent Tax to show it's Charlie Thacker, but it's introduced by Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and member of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in regular session met this 23rd day of September, 2024, resolution in reference approval of committees for Hawkins County in as per TCA Code, whereas the following committees are being presented for approval for Hawkins County, Tennessee, per TCA Code as follows. TCA 93405 Audit Committee, TCA 575105 Beer Board, TCA 68211102 Environmental, TCA 817101106 Ethics, TCA 6752507, Delinquent Tax and Resale of Land. TCA 817101106 Ethics, TCA 6752507, Delinquent Tax and Resale of Land. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Barker, second Commissioner Thacker. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
13 yes, one abstained.
All right, thank you all, moving on to 2024-09-05, introduced by Commissioner Barker.
Okay, I'm getting a workout.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman, and member of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in regular session met this 23rd day of September 2024, approval to award the five-year engineering contract for professional airport services to Holtz Consulting, whereas pursuit of Tennessee Annotated Code 62107, if a public works project is expected to cost more than $50,000 and involves architecture, engineering, or landscaping architecture, the planned specifications and estimates for the project must be prepared by a registered architect, engineer, or landscape architect, and whereas a request for qualifications was solicited for services to provide general consulting, funding procurement, and grant administration, planning, and programming, engineering design, architectural design, analysts, and studies for the Hawkins County Airport, of which three were received, whereas all these responses was graded by the required committee with the Holtz Consulting Company, LLC of Knoxville, Tennessee, scoring highest, the summary sheets of the grading is attached, and therefore attached to this resolution is a contract and a fee schedule from Holtz Consulting Company, LLC. Now therefore be it resolved that the county mayor, Mark, will be authorized to sign that agreement and any and all documents of said contract with the Holtz Consulting Company, LLC. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay, I got a motion from Commissioner Barker, second Commissioner Gillum. Are there questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yep, Ms. Smith, yep, we do have a few questions. Do we have an estimate on how much we are anticipating we might intend to pay out to this company over the next five years?
It's gonna depend on how many projects come up, we've got the hangars to build, that's really all that's on the radar right now. But there may be, you know, something the FAA requires us to do, and they may be called into action at that point.
Okay, and do we possibly know how much we should pay out to the previous contractor?
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay. And I guess it's a different company, can they be paid in partial hours, like attorneys, like half hour work?
We've got some representatives from Holt here, would you care to answer that question?
Yeah, we charge for Holt.
And you're who, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I'm Jeff Pike with Holt Consulting, my colleague Bill Marison from Holt Consulting. So, we're here to assume you're the most good, well, we're here to say thank you. We're happy to be here, but yeah, answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Clons.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked with numerous people in Hawkins County, I think it's time Hawkins County got out of the airport business. I'm told, I used to own a property up there, and I see maybe one plane come in a day, and they come and go, and they don't log in, they don't log out. I don't know of any industry in Hawkins County that uses that airport for any purpose, if industry, if they'll spend, needs any parts or anything, they come into Tri-Cities and Amazon, or somebody picks them up and brings them, whatever spies are needed, and there are reports from numerous people that planes come in in the middle of that, they don't log in, they don't log out, we don't know who they are, or where they're going, or what they have landed. And it's time for our Budget Committee and us, we as commissioners, to stop rubber stamping stuff that doesn't provide any benefit for Hawkins County.
All right, Commissioner Thacker. I'm sorry, Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Ma'am. Couple questions I've got. First question, the committee members, who's that overlooked application and stuff? Who's the committee members?
We put a committee together in the office, it was Sarah Davis, it was Michelle, it was myself from the office, it was Commissioner Gillum, it was Commissioner Barker, and it was the airport manager.
Okay, the second question I've got, and maybe Mr., I forgot your name, maybe you can answer it, is there any airports in the surrounding counties or East Tennessee that uses the company that you represent?
No.
Okay, what would be the location of your company?
Where in Knoxville?
Okay, okay, thanks.
That was one of the things they were graded on, Commissioner Barrett, proximity to our airport, so, you know, it didn't, I'm just gonna say for myself, it didn't really matter that they hadn't done any airports around here, they have been involved in airports in other places, and Bill is a real seasoned veteran of doing airports, correct?
Yes, sir, I have about 50, I hate to admit this, but I have about 50 years of airport management experience.
Good deal. All right, is that all, Commissioner Barrett?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Thacker, I'll get you in a minute, Danny.
My question was, if you have a project, they only get paid if they do that project.
Correct.
Otherwise, they don't get paid anything.
Correct.
If we have a $75,000, $100,000 project that's going on up there, we use them, and they get paid, but if we don't have a project, they don't get paid, right? Okay, that was my question.
Okay, Commissioner Gillum.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the commission know that we as the committee who did select Holt Consulting, we did rely heavily on the airport manager, his word as he had dealt with the previous company in doing the work they did on the runway and the taxiway and whatnot, and anyway, he's the boots on the ground, he's the guy who's there every day and deals with these folks, and he felt confident in this decision, so I thought that may, y'all may want to know that, since he's the one on the front lines doing the work.
Yeah, good point. Any other questions, Danny?
I would just like to second Mr. Clons by saying that I've heard from, I'm not exaggerating, probably literally hundreds of people that feel that the airport isn't a necessary accessory for Hawkins County, has lost us money for a long time, and I just wanted to say that I really appreciate you coming on the record and saying that, I think there's actually a few more commissioners who probably feel similarly similar to what we're really, to you. I got a piece of gum in my mouth, sorry. And, you know, I would really say that I think it would be cool if some other commissioners would kinda voice some of the things that they actually think about the airport moving forward, 'cause there's gonna be a lot of money going into that, there is a, there is a small clique of people, I'm not calling any names, but they're there, and they have a big juicy whip vision for the airport, it's gonna cost a lot of money, and it's a nice dream, I suppose, but at the end of the day, I think we probably avoid it and not consider it a necessity for the county, so that's all I have to say.
It's a quick question, who are the people that have a big plan?
Well, when I attended the last Budget Committee meeting, and they were talking about, you said you were talking about hangars, but I remember a list of three or four different ideas of different projects that were going to benefit the airport, and I don't want you to take this personally or defensively, but, you know, I understand, the angle that's being taken is this is helping our industry, but that's almost an empty claim, it seems like a lot of people are saying like, well, where does the industry actually use that? Please provide that, and that's actually been asked on the record a couple times, can you provide where the airport is actually helping our industry, and it just keeps not happening. So, it's just, I mean, it's a nice idea, but we've had a lot of nice ideas that have led us into raising taxes.
Okay, the list of projects is put forward by the Tennessee Department of Aeronautical Transportation, it's not our list, we work on it with them.
The county would.
We typically get grants to cover that. Right now, the grants are at 97 and a half, two and a half, we pay two and a half percent on the grants, so that list has come from the state. We also need to realize that any grant that we've gotten in the last, I don't know how many years, would have to be paid back if we cease using that as an airport, and we're talking millions of dollars. Yes, sir.
I hear everything you're saying, and I do realize the situation we've gotten ourselves into by accepting grants that have strings tied to that, that kinda force us to start spending more money, but in the big picture, if the majority of the citizenry in Hawkins County, which I do believe very accurately that the majority of Hawkins County does not approve furthering the airport, would you think it would be appropriate for the commission to consider the citizenry's opinion on it?
Sure.
And they're like, you don't wanna do it anymore.
If somebody wants to come to the next airport committee meeting, we could do that, but you have to think about the fact that if, once we get these hangars built with a grant, once we get these hangars built, the airport is going to be making us money, not costing us money, so why would you wanna get rid of something that's gonna make us money within the next couple of years?
I suppose that that could be proven to be guaranteed, but the 10-year past of it losing money verifiably, being able to point to that as not trusting necessarily that.
The airport over the last several years has cost us maybe $7,000. If you look at the budget, it looks like a whole lot more, because we spend a whole lot on it, but you gotta look at the revenue side of it, where the grants come in, but we are, and we could sit down and talk about how many hangars it's gonna take to make us money, and we feel like the ones we're getting ready to build are gonna be capable of doing that, there's a, there's a high demand for hangars out there, yeah.
Should add, to be fair, that I have heard from all those same people that if it could be proven verifiably, factually, that the airport would be making a bunch of money, well then there would be no reason for anybody to be upset about the airport.
Right.
But if that could actually be implemented and actualized.
It's not a bunch of money to start with, but it will be some, and it will grow over the years, I mean, we, we have, and years ago, if I'd have heard that you talk about that, I may have agreed with you, but now, because we're, we're working hard on it and getting it turned around to be a revenue-producing organization, I think that it's worthwhile keeping, and, you know, I can't go over the figures right here, but if you wanna come and see me, I can show you, you know, where the hangars are gonna be, what the rent's gonna be, and what the revenue's gonna be, and where it's all gonna wash out.
Mr. Chairman, please explain to us how it benefits the average citizen or any business or industry in Hawkins County?
Does everything in the county benefit the average citizen, Mr. Clons?
He has a legitimate question.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm answering.
You're saying highway, irrelevant, everybody else does, we certainly could use money to redo our roads.
We're not putting money in the airport, Mr. Clons.
The money that's going to the airport can't be used on the roads.
I understand that, but, nobody's proved to me that it's any use to anybody in Hawkins County or any business or anybody else.
Did you go out there during the airport open house?
Pardon?
Did you go out there during the airport open house, when all the kids were signing up for the Young Eagles program, they were all interested in aviation?
I don't know why I wasn't, but I'd have to go back and look at my schedule.
Okay.
We've got an intern there now, it's learning mechanics, airplane mechanics, from Cherokee High School, I mean, there's a lot of stuff goes on that people don't realize is going on, Mr. Jack, I can't do the Mr. 'cause I couldn't think of your last name, I'm sorry.
Parker.
Parker, ask a gentleman, ask me to talk to a gentleman.
I was gonna ask him about that.
And we had a, had a great conversation, and maybe some of you all should talk with him, I think he's friends with most of you, and he's given, I mean, he's got some great ideas, we're gonna put him on the airport committee as a citizen, and see if we can't work out some things, and maybe he can keep you better informed of what's going on up there, he's a pilot himself, he's got several, several years of background in education, aeronautical education, so, you know, there's lots of things that when we look at, and it looks like we're spending a lot of money on right now, but if you will look, we've been kicking cans down the road for a lot of years, and we finally come to the point you can't kick the can anymore, and we're trying to fix stuff, and, you know, is it costing a little bit money, yes, now, but eventually, it won't, and, you know, I just wish you would give, give us some time to do what we're trying to do, and, you know, trust in what we're trying to do, because we just can't, you know, we let our school systems fall apart for 20 years, did nothing for them, and then all of a sudden, all the schools had to be fixed, and we're just right now getting to the point where we got decent schools, where our kids don't have to go out there and buckets are in the hallway every time it rains, so, you know, like I said, there's a lot of things that, you know, I've been, before I was on this commission, I attended all the meetings, and there was things that you'd just sit there and wonder, why are you doing this, why are you postponing this, and we're to the point where we can't postpone stuff anymore, it's gotta be fixed, you know, you let a roof go 10 years, well, there's 10 more years of repair, it's gotta be done to it, and you can't, you gotta fix it, so, you know, I think if you'll be patient, I think you're gonna see some things happen up there, and as to your question, Mr. Clons, talk to Randy Lord, he goes and flies food in all the time, from Florida, from Louisiana, and sells it in Red Dog, and one of the best restaurants we've got in town, and that's one of the reasons he's got a good restaurant, because he brings in good food, and he flies from airport to wherever it is he goes. We've got some people coming in tomorrow to look at some property at the industrial park, they're gonna fly into the airport, so, you know, it is used, I mean, we're probably, maybe should do a better job, but we don't have a hired person up there, and it's hard to tell somebody to quit working on making your money as a mechanic up there, and to turn, stop, and run out and ask somebody, where are you going and why'd you land here? Or what are you doing here?
Most general aviation airports don't require any kind of log-in, log-out, and as far as your question about the average citizen, Mr. Clons, the average citizen probably knows, but there is a group that it does benefit. I consider myself an average citizen, the school system doesn't benefit me, I don't have anybody in the schools, the convenience centers don't benefit me, Rogerswood Trash Pickup gets mine, so there's a lot of things that we put a lot of money in that not every citizen in Hawkins County is gonna benefit from.
I have a question, so you brought up the airport manager, so he's not a hired paid person?
He gets, he gets a hangar to run his repair business out of, in exchange for taking care of the airport.
Okay.
There's no funds, there's no dollar amount given to him.
Okay, so it's almost like a bar or place?
Yeah.
So, I was thinking, and it's been brought up to us before, if there was more accountability at the airport, like a lot of people are asking about, not full flight logs, but, you know, hey, this plane landed at this time from Florida with this type of cargo or whatever, and we had something like that for a year, and could actually look at some statistics, I think that a lot of citizens would be able to maybe feel a little bit better about that.
Of course, what's gonna happen if you do that, we're gonna have to hire somebody to do that.
Well, it sounds like we have someone kind of hired.
No, we, no, we barter with him, and that's the only way he makes his living, so if he's not working on the airplanes.
He's getting something, and we're getting something.
Yeah, but if he's not working on the airplanes, he's not making a living.
What'll we get out of that bartering, though?
Is he working on airplanes in the middle of the night?
I'm sorry?
Is he working on airplanes in the middle of the night?
Well, I'm sure he's not, but he's not gonna be there in the middle of the night.
He might not be, so he could check logs, sort of do logs, right?
Yeah, but there's no requirement for a log, and I understand that there's a need.
She's asking if there could be a requirement.
I understand that there's a need to know, if we can figure that out without spending a whole lot of money on it, we'll work on it.
Mr. Chairman, we're literally getting the airport, and we're trying to pass a resolution that reaches this point of order and get back to the first one.
I have one more question.
Real quick.
Questions being called?
I was just gonna say that avoiding hiring personnel, I don't see what would be so crazy about getting a video monitoring system on the runway, that would literally distract the number of flights landed, that could easily be reviewed by somebody via, you know, fat scoring, whatever, reviewing the table numbers.
That may be a worthwhile idea, with a GoPro or Trocam or something up there.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Gillum, you got anything, real quick?
Mr., Commissioner Roach called for a question.
Mr. Commissioner Roach called for a question.
Okay.
All gives a difference.
Okay, okay. We've got questions called, so let's go ahead and vote. He will reset.
It shows that I'm voting on committees.
Please vote on committees.
I had, must say, I had the same problem last minute.
Just go ahead.
Just announce your vote and we'll put it in here for you.
Okay. On resolution number five, I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Thank you.
10 yes, 4 no.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. 2024-09-06, Commissioner Roach.
Before I read this in, you will have in front of you a, an updated version of the resolution. It was amended in the Budget Committee, so it's not going to be in your package. It's going to be 2024-09-06 amendment. So make sure you're looking at the loose leaf amendment.
The Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission, Regular Session, met this 23rd day of September 2024. Resolution in reference approval of providing funding to Hawkins County EMS in the amount of $242,500 from restricted opioid funds for purchase of a newly refurbished ambulance. Whereas Hawkins County, or pardon me, whereas Hawkins County, Tennessee covers a total of 500 square miles with 11 major highways traversing through the county, two industrial parks, a county-owned public-use airport, and explosives manufacturing facility, numerous raroes, and other assorted factories and businesses located within its borders, and has a population density of 110 persons per square mile, all of which are currently being provided EMS services by Hawkins County EMS. Whereas the Hawkins County EMS has expressed to the County Commission its need for additional ambulances and upkeep of its current fleet. And whereas in the interest of continuation of the services provided by Hawkins County EMS, and with acknowledgement of the importance of proper equipment to do so, now therefore be it resolved that Hawkins County will provide funding in the amount of $242,500 to Hawkins County EMS to be used toward the purchase of a new ambulance. And be it further resolved that if Hawkins County EMS ceases operation within five years of the purchase of the ambulance, the equipment is to become the property of Hawkins County. The funds indicated above shall be taken from opioid abatement funds, the purchase being allowable under the regulation, regulations of such funds. Mr. Chairman, I still move.
A motion from Commissioner Roach, second, Commissioner Palmer. Are there questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, do you care real quick if I, so the EMS had asked us to provide funding for some remounts, but while they were going through that process, they actually identified a new ambulance? And Jason, do you care to explain to us real quick the different direction you decided to go in?
Yeah. So initially, we discussed the possibility of remounting two of our ambulances, which interns will take those ambulances out of service off the road, in orders from six months to potentially years. It just depends on how long the manufacturer takes. And with the inflation and the part-time of being able to obtain chassis or boxes, ordering a new ambulance now roughly takes about two and a half to three years to get one. With that price increase up to around $300,000 to $350,000 for a new one now. So we just looked up, actually on social media, and found an ambulance that was currently being built that was for sale. The ambulance itself, which is the cabin chassis and the box, is $215,000. That doesn't include the mount for the stretcher. So the, the stretcher mount is another $24,000, which brings it up to like $238,000, I think it is. It's also required to have internet service provided on the ambulance, which is another roughly about $2,000. So that's how we come up to the $242,500. Other than that, it's, it's a new ambulance. It will add another ambulance, ambulance to our fleet. Currently, we have one ambulance that has less than 175,000 miles on it. The rest of them have 175,000 plus, which means they're getting close to, to the end of their life, and we're looking to hopefully be able to remount those at some point in time, and then there's the issue.
Any other questions for Jason? Commissioner Barrett?
Jason, I noticed you said it was a purchase for an additional ambulance. Do, do you foresee any problems and staffing issues for this additional ambulance?
This is providing a, a new ambulance to our fleet. This isn't adding a ambulance to operation every day. That's not, I'm saying a new ambulance to the fleet.
Okay. Commissioner Paulson?
Jason, I know we had talked about that. Commissioner Barrett, so basically what they're doing, they're taking an old one out of service that uses a backup and then replacing it with this one, if that helps. But Jason, I do have a question.
Okay.
On average, I know you said you've got a couple of ambulances that are approaching 200,000 miles. What, on average, how long does an ambulance last you in your service, year-wise?
On average, we're looking two and a half to three years. Some of the units that are in the, stationed in like Mount Carmel or Churchill, you might be able to get a little bit longer out of them because most of those go to Holston Valley or Indian Path Hospital, so a little bit of a shorter distance. But especially the ones in the lower part of the county, they get the mileage put on them a whole lot quicker than those from up there.
Thank you. Commissioner Britt?
This question is for you, I guess it's more toward Commissioner Roach. Is this $242,500, is that the, in addition to what they were given out of the budget, or is it that and then the difference?
So this money is coming from, if you notice, opioid, pardon, it's cited in the resolution itself.
Opioid abatement funds.
There you go, opioid abatement funds. We had already discussed allocating funds to them for remounts, but when they came up, they came up to this, built the opportunity to buy a new ambulance, we just kind of shifted our direction away from the remount so they could add another unit to their fleet and still get a new ambulance too. It's just, but I guess the remounts that they were planning on having done will just stay the same. You know, they're, they're getting some age on them, but they do get a new ambulance for a similar cost of what we were going to give them. It's, we've, we've kind of been building up to this for a while.
Danny?
I just wanted to kind of, what Mr. Britt just asked, Jason, I was wondering, I remember in the, during budget season, the asking 400, can you give 400, we gave you 200. He's saying, does this come out of money? You said it's coming out of the opioid abatement fund. So there's no new money coming out of the general, out of the budget in order to purchase this?
I don't, I don't think that's, you can't say that, because any money that comes to the county is going to have to filter through the budget, but we have opioid abatement money that's restricted to uses that would address the opioid crisis, because it came from the lawsuit that we, we were part of, that we won those funds through that settlement, I guess. I don't know which ones that came through Johnson &amp; Johnson or Purdue.
There's, there's a bunch of them that are in one pile.
So to say it doesn't come through the budget, I don't think you could say that, because that money still lands in the general fund, but it's not, that money is taxpayer money. It's not money that was generated through taxpayer revenue, though. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Gibson?
That was my question on draft three or four of the budget. We requested EMS to make a cut, and that was for $200,000 with the intent of circling back and looking at pulling that from the opioid funds.
Yes. Anybody else? Miss May.
Yes, we have one question from our meeting last week. What other funding does our county EMS get by way of like National Highway Traffic Administration or anything like that? Do we get any funds from there?
So the only funds that we get other than insurance reimbursement or grant opportunities or through government, which only helps the Hawkins County government, we get in-kind contributions from Mount Carmel and Churchill, the demo mountains, the San Antonio, the lake physically, all of it. The only other funding that we get is through grant opportunities, which is, some of them do come through the Tennessee Highway Safety Office, which definitely comes from the National Highway Safety.
And if, anything that comes like that is usually specifically for equipment, not for operating funds. We've got some new, what was it, respirators or something?
Ventilers.
Ventilers.
Yes, sir.
I, I, you know, Mr. Boyd's not an electrician, and I, I'm not an EMS person, so, all right. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
14 yes.
All right. Resolution passes. 2024-09-07, introduced by Commissioner Gillum.
The Honorable Mayor Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission and Regular Session, met this 23rd day of September 2024. Resolution in reference authorizing Hawkins County to allow the Terry Law Firm to enter into litigation on its behalf against Holston Connect in reference to franchise fees not being paid. Whereas Holston Connect operates a high-speed fiber service which provides internet, telephone, and television to its subscribers in Hawkins County, and whereas video service providers are required to pay a 5% growth, of gross revenues franchise fee to the municipalities and counties where they operate. And whereas Holston Connect has thus far refused to pay the franchise fee, and because of this, Hawkins County has lost significant amounts of revenue. And whereas the Terry Law Firm from Moorestown, Tennessee is willing to represent Hawkins County in a contingency fee arrangement where Hawkins County would not pay any money unless the Terry Law Firm is successful in the litigation. And whereas, as detailed in the attached letter and contract, should the litigation be successful, Hawkins County would pay 25% of the total recovery plus expenses. The expenses would be divided prorata with the town of Bull's Gap and any other party represented by the Terry Law Firm. And whereas the county attorney has reviewed the attached and is in agreement with it, now therefore be it resolved by the County Commission of Hawkins County, Tennessee, that County Mayor Mark DeWitt is authorized to execute the attached contract and any other necessary documents to participate in the litigation as detailed in the attached. Mr. Chairman, I still move.
Motion from Commissioner Gillum, second from Commissioner Alvis. Commissioner Gillum, go right ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to share a few things with the, with the commission. First of all, we, to be clear, I did say at the Budget Committee this past week that I would be pulling this from consideration, and that was after our county attorney had advised potentially to do that, and I decided to follow his advice that day. However, as I thought about this and did some more of my own research, I really wanted to introduce this and at least share some comments regarding some of Mr. Sandlin's comments at our budget meeting just last week. Mr. Palmer beat me to the punch on the first one where he told us, Mr. Sandlin, Mr. Sandlin told us that you, basically, you can have Holston TV no matter who your internet provider was. According to their own customer agreement, that is not true. I'll read it again for you, just in case you didn't hear what Mr. Palmer said. This is in the user agreement. It says, "I also understand that monthly subscription of internet service from Holston Connect is required to obtain subscription to Holston TV. I must maintain the subscription to Holston Connect's internet service throughout duration of subscription to Holston TV." So what Mr. Sandlin shared with the Budget Committee was absolutely not true according to the customer agreement written by Holston Connect themselves. I also would like to point out concerning him saying that it is exactly like Hulu Live, Hulu, YouTube TV, and other providers. As a user of Hulu myself, I subscribe to Hulu Live, and I get on Saturday, actually I wasn't home, so I picked up my phone and I watched the Tennessee game from my phone on Hulu Live. Had I been a Holston TV customer, I would have been highly disappointed because according to their own channel guide, only a very few number of channels are available unless you were home and connected to their Holston Connect internet service. So it is nothing like Hulu Live that I subscribe as a user of it every single day. And then he makes some claims that cable companies are not paying property taxes on fiber and on their cables. According to this document from the local government revenue, ah goodness, it's from, I'll pass it around if you want to know. I'll tell you exactly where it's from, but they absolutely do have to pay property taxes. Charter is paying property taxes and the franchise fee. That was an inaccurate statement to the committee, that the satellite television providers are also required to pay property taxes, and both are doing so, and Charter is doing so, and they are also paying the franchise fee. And so I'll say this, you know, my feelings on this, I, I think the reason this is so difficult for all of us, if I think we would all be honest, is because it's so close to home. I have very good friends who work at Holston Electric. I have family who retired from Holston Electric. I know several of the board members. I know all these folks, and it's, and it's hard for us. I think if we were talking about suing Charter, there wouldn't be a, we would vote on this in a second, and we'd vote to do it. But it's because it's close to home, it's, and if we're not going to pursue this, basically what it comes down to, there's a disagreement between Holston Electric and Hawkins County. There's a disagreement. All we're doing is saying, let a judge decide who's right. That's what we're saying. But we're afraid to do that because it's people that we know who work there, and we feel bad for it, this and that and the other. And I'll tell you, if that's not the good old boy system, I don't know what is. And if we're not willing to enforce the law equally and let a judge decide who is right and who is wrong, because I am not qualified to sit here and talk about, you know, what is and is not a streaming service versus a cable service, but there's enough evidence here for me, and enough misstatements have been made to me about this, to draw the conclusion that a judge needs to hear it. And so that's why I chose to go ahead and introduce this tonight, and I would encourage all of my fellow commissioners to apply the law equally and without consideration of anything else. What is, what is the law? There's a disagreement about it. Let the judge decide, and we can take it from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Commissioner Roach?
So Mr. Chairman, I, I do want to mention a couple of things that Commissioner Gillum said. He did, he did agree to pull it, and while it's not binding, any committee that we have is only a recommended committee, and I understand that, and I respect his right to run the resolution tonight, because it has his name on it, he can certainly do that. But typically, if we pull a resolution in committee and we don't vote on it and discuss it in committee, then we, we do pull it in the full commission. Secondly, this lawsuit is not going to be litigated or settled anytime soon. Our, our county attorney asked us to hold off because there's a lot more information to collect. Most of Josh Gillum's, Commissioner Gillum's points that he made, I agree with. I think we do need to apply the law equally, no matter who you are. If you owe the county money because what, because of what is written in Tennessee Code Annotated, I believe that you should pay that, and if you don't pay that, I believe you should be held to account for that. However, there's a whole lot more that we still need to, I feel like, learn. Secondly, there's a lot more time before this thing's going to be settled and litigated, and it's not the County Commission's job to litigate this lawsuit. Really, what our job is, is to decide whether or not we're going to join the lawsuit itself. We can't decide whether Holston Connect is correct, or we can't decide whether other municipalities represented by the Terry Law Firm are correct. That's not our job. Our job is to join the lawsuit if we feel that we, we should, based on knowledge we have gleaned. And, you know, I, I don't know that I, once again, disagree with all that. I just think that we, we need to hold off just a little while, based on our county attorney's advice. I may vote for it later. I may vote in, you know, to join the lawsuit, because to be fair, if we join the lawsuit and we lose, we're out nothing. We lose nothing. If we join the lawsuit and we prevail, we stand to collect money that we did not get in the past. However, we're a long way from that right now. And lastly, and I'll go ahead and say this since we're debating it tonight, the fact is, is if we join the lawsuit, we also commit ourselves to paying, I believe, 25% of the proceeds to the law firm that's representing us in this case. But in what I think, and I'm not an attorney, but what I think is if the suing parties prevail in this case, and Holston Electric is found liable for those fees, then it seems that we're still going to have to receive those fees because we're still going to be applied to that fee structure as determined by the... to that fee structure as determined by the court if they decide that Holston Connect needs to pay the franchise fee. But I don't know that, I need to learn some more. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote against it tonight. That doesn't mean I'm going to vote against it forever. If it comes back up and I gain more information, I may vote in favor, but because it was pulled based on our county attorney's advice, I do believe that we need to vote against it tonight.
Commissioner Barrett, hold on just one second. Mr. Cal.
Just a, a point to clarify, perhaps what's a misunderstanding, we're talking about joining the lawsuit, that's not what is at issue. We are already in the lawsuit, the county is, all right? The county has made an appearance in the lawsuit. The question tonight is whether you want to retain Terry and Company at this time to represent, take the representation of the county. So it's not a matter of, are we going to join the suit or not join the suit? We're already there. It's simply a matter of, are we going to, at this point in time, engage the services of Terry and Company on a contingency fee basis of twenty-five percent plus the prorata distribution of expenses? This lawsuit is going to go forward regardless of what we do, and what Commissioner Roach has said is, I believe, true. When the definitive determination is made, we're still going to be in the same position, all right? But we are in the suit. This is not a discussion whether to join the suit or enforce the law equally or not. We're already there. Tonight's resolution is strictly to decide whether, at this point in time, the commission wishes to retain Terry and Company.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Barrett.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Hold on just a second. Commissioner Gillum? Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Palmer.
Mr. Cal, so, basically, you, you answered a question I was going to ask you. So if we, we're already in the lawsuit, so if we do not join, if we do not agree to have Terry Law Firm represent us, we either collect the money or we don't, need to wait now already, correct?
Mr. Boyd, if we don't hire Terry Law Firm, what?
If we don't hire Terry Law Firm to represent us, then if the lawsuit settles against Holston Connect, then we collect the money already, correct?
Then if the thing were to settle, if you were not to retain the Terry and Company, then the suit would be settled, then you would have a hundred percent in the war. If it would be settled after you retain, contingency agreement, the thing says I've reviewed it, there's nothing wrong with this contingency agreement, it's just a question of the timing of the entry into it, in my opinion. And there's certainly valid other different opinions, but we will be in the lawsuit anyway, and for good or bad, we'll abide by the outcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillum.
So, we are, we are named as a party in the lawsuit, but if a judgment is made and we aren't, uh, I guess I'm confused as to what you're saying, uh, because what you're saying is, we don't have to join at all, and if they win, uh, if Bull's Gap wins, we get the money anyway. Uh, Ms., uh, Dillon, can you speak to that later, since this is your contract?
So, on that topic, uh, we represent Bull's Gap, but we're not going to do all the work for Hawkins County and expect not to be paid any of that. There's something called the common fund doctrine, and if the commission were to say, well, you just go ahead, you all do all the work, and then abandon all this, we're going to collect the money, then the chancellor would have the discretion to order Hawkins County to pay, and since they're the largest shareholder, it could ultimately be a lot more than twenty-five percent. But that isn't the discretion of the chancellor, uh, but that, that's the answer to your question.
Thank you. Um, do you have any, also Dillon, do you have any facts at this time, uh, to claim that there's only nineteen hundred people inside the county, uh, currently using Holston Connect?
Well, until there's discovery done, if it counted upon Holston Connect, we cannot know the answer to that. Uh, they've already made a lot of misrepresentations in this commission. Number one, you can buy a Holston TV and watch it even if you have charter internet, that's not true. When you pay property taxes and cable companies don't, that's not true. So, you know, it's possible that they have nineteen hundred customers, but even if they do, you can't just go off how much they make monthly off, uh, from the customer. Part of the equation is also advertiser revenue, which, again, because we don't have any discovery for how much advertising revenue comes to Hawkins County, from customers of Hawkins County, you simply can't say how much that is. But, uh, Charter pays the county a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Charter is not available and owes to Hawkins County, so that should give you a good idea of how much we'll look at money.
Anybody else have questions for?
I have a spark. There's not a, not a, not just Dillon, why, anybody else have questions? Dillon, I'm sorry. We can't fix that from up here, we don't know what it is. So, if we turn the, if we turn the whole system off, then it's also going to be part here, so. We beg, just we need to reboot it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Gillum?
Okay. And I'd like to see you, you all, there's three pictures of Hawkins County, and maybe there's a eleven million dollar, I don't see how they're making a eleven million dollars if they don't have thirteen questions.
Well, so I believe what Mr. Chairman said, except for, you know, broad, broad means internet, you know, and, and, and was, there's only nineteen hundred of those fourteen thousand dollars, uh, but the eleven million some dollars changed from twenty twenty-one, which is growing significantly, uh, was from all broad. Absolutely, the commission looks to handle that.
Dillon, in the previous meeting, there's been all kinds of numbers thrown around, there's been all sorts of settings, uh, I guess it kind of piggybacks off what Ms. Trent's saying. So just doing a rough math, if you take, you know, at the high mark, it's the most expensive package, a hundred and ninety-nine-five, now nineteen-hundred, you're looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars. You take twenty-five percent off the girl. So the county would look at, at the high mark, a hundred and seventy thousand, nine-twenty-eight, seventy-five, fifty-one years. Now we know at, at the very beginning, they didn't have nine hundred, so.
The way that we view that is that they've got thirty thousand plus electric customers. If you figured a conservative estimate, that would be eight thousand dollars, approximation, have that service. Uh, that may be wrong or maybe right, depending on how it has an approximation. Again, that number cannot be known, it's certainly too, so they're four square, under oath, and give us discovery.
So we're being asked to make a decision based on numbers?
Can't be known until the litigation proceeds.
So if it does go to the Tennessee Supreme Court, which Mr. Boyd indicated that it can possibly go to anyway?
Those numbers will be known thirty days from now, because we'll be able to send what's called interagatories and request production. They have a duty and a notice that will proceed to respond to that within thirty days under oath, so we will know, uh, way before we go to the Supreme Court.
Man, you know, to go back on the fact, you know, Cal, that this, this resolution is basically to hire your own service.
Yes.
So, if we're already a party into this, whether we agree to this or not, and just reiterate, you said that it'd be up to the chancellor's decision if the county would have to pay you guys or not, so we're not, and I don't know law, I'm afraid I'm another law. So, really, if we're not agreeing to hire you, would the chancellor still require us to pay even though we've not accepted your contract?
That's what the BAs, I mean, the county, now, I will say that, we're representing Bull's Gap with a very small stake, Hawkins County is a huge stake, the biggest stake of our farm, uh, and if you all decide, we're going to set back, see what happens, and that, it would just become Mr. Cal, that he wants to depress on the lawsuit to the end, but we're not going to do all the work for the county and just not affect it.
So we're already a party, so this goes back.
You're not, no, let me clarify, whenever you, you ask for a fair court judgment, you have to make any one of these interests, that the judgment that you're asking for could affect that lawsuit. So you're a party in the sense that you are named as a respondent, so that you know, hey, this lawsuit's going on, but there's been a claim filed by Hawkins County against Holston Connect. So, there's been a request for a judgment, a judge to say, hey, Judge, you owe Hawkins County twenty-four, uh, you got to pay it for X amount of energy in the past, so there's been no approach for anything by Hawkins.
So would a judge not say, say, let's just say, if the judge rules that he has Holston Connect, you need to pay the fee, would a judge not also say, hey, you go back, they hold Hawkins?
None of that request is made, you have to make a request for a judgment, as it stands, if we went to trial in New Orleans, the only one that made claim was Cannon County, City of Moorestown, and Bull's Gap, uh, and the town of Rogers, so the judge has given up their trial, and there's been a cross claim, and you're calling that a dispute. Good night.
Well, Mr. Judge, you're right, uh, you can tell we won't file a lawsuit, because we're going to the super, we tell off, because it is a lawsuit, so, so, uh, just what the town of Rogers would give, because we're going to be respondent, we would file an answer saying that we're not liable, we're named to do our first service provider, and we'd file a cross claim against Holston Connect, right? That would be a claim that won't put it, there's plenty of time to do that, there's plenty of time in my opinion, and I don't think that Terry's taking it to turn down the years, particularly by a month from now, if, hey, we looked at it and we'd like to have to represent. So, although his technical control is continuing to file, we are a party in the suit for the remaining six months. The only we haven't done is invest any time and effort in the power of the answer, which is simply say, we deny reliable, because I was in my life, doing it to have providing a service, a streaming service, and then followed with a cross claim, which would be filed against the same party side of the suit, the jury. Uh, that's what the town of Rogers, it would be a formal type of response to Hawkins County. I tell off in that until we decide, number one, is anything to go forward, uh, because we originally thought this was going to be very contentious, uh, there were figures thrown out about this is a seven figure, that's a million bucks, I don't think we're talking anywhere that, uh, so, it just seems like you need more information, and then we can decide what to do. I have nothing involved in having Terry Law Firm represent the county, quite confident in your bill, it's simply a matter of, just commission aside, when they want to, when they start, if they does, you then have the contract to be taken.
I just responded one thing, there's no settlement talk to me, uh, the only thing that came up about this was Kevin Keaton, Mr. Boyd approached Kevin Keaton and said, hey, Holston Connect might want to mediate this thing, and that was forty-five days ago. You know, nothing's been said since then, and then last week, Mr. Sandlin comes and says, we don't know your franchise fees. We pay you some property taxes, so be happy, you know, it's kind of how that went. Uh, so there's, there's still willingness at this point to settle, I was going to make it clear, I've been in touch with all the other attorneys, nobody's been approached about it, so.
Commissioner Roach. So, a couple of things, one, there's been no indication by, so just to those commissioners here today, there's been no indication by Mr. Sandlin at our budget committee last week, or by their attorney here, Mr. Boyd tonight, that they have been set, and so I'm not sure if there's something being said behind the doors that different from what they're saying publicly, but basically they, there's, under my, my opinion is that there has not been any indication that they want, they had a serious conversation with Sandlin. They have tried to downplay it, so they're blaming nineteen hundred people, and if that's the case, then they shouldn't be too worried, they're probably not helping very much tonight, uh, if that's the case. Uh, but, it's been misrepresented to us several of these points, as I said, that the general manager misrepresented several things to us last week. And to the point of, uh, Mr. Roach's point, uh, who I have broken the record about me pulling this, uh, me deciding to pull that at the committee meeting, I changed my mind tonight, it'd be no different in me voting against it had we introduced it that day and then deciding to vote for it today, in my opinion. It's a, it's a matter of, we heard Mr. Sandlin out, he's given ample time to share his, his points of view, we were, uh, kind of out of the blue advised not to engage in conversation and not to engage in, uh, because we were potentially in litigation or in settlement costs with big folks, and, uh, so, by default, I was like, well, shoot, I didn't know if this was even going to happen, right? So I, I said, well, I guess we'll just pull it, and then, once I, and that's no offense to you, Mr. Cal, I don't want you to take that towards you, I just, once I got out of the meeting, I thought, well, shoot, I think I, I really would like this to be considered, and I believe all the members of the budget committee are here, and, uh, they could hear it the same, with all commissioners there, the same as they could with your setting up this, so I would actually not to, in my opinion, not to put a lot of weight on that, uh, because pretty much just fourteen of us, whether it's seven budget period or all fourteen of us all together, just both are conscious, but if you're for, if you're for it, if you're against it, we'll all weigh things together today, but let's just vote on it, we got it.
Thank you. Um, me and I have probably said, Mr. Gillum, uh, we have to do this for a reason, we're going around with resolutions and this report for the commission, which is my opinion. Um, secondly, I, I, I do want to point out, I've, I've got a question for you, is there another hearing scheduled anytime soon?
There's a pending motion dismissed that, uh, the judge granted in the case of over with, now that hasn't been scheduled yet, but it's registered to be scheduled. So, at this point, it's sort of been, we're waiting for the largest stakeholder, Hawkins County, who's got the most skin in the game, to, to make a decision about whether or not we're going to participate.
So, Mike, if we do nothing tonight, so that it gets, let's say that we table this motion and hold off until next month, so we can collect some more information, um, what are the chances that that hearing's going to happen in the next forty-five days?
Well, largely that's up to, uh, Mr. Boyd, when he's putting this together. Uh, in terms of what information you need to gather, I'm an open book, if you have any questions.
And, and I appreciate that, we're, I guess I'm, I'm going off of what our county attorney, who we voted for and hired to represent us, has advised us to do, so I'm going to try to trust his opinion, since we put him in that position, and he's, he's asked that we hold off for a little while. Um, I, you know, I, do you think, uh, the meeting's going to be held within the next thirty days?
I have no reason to think that unless he files the motion, yes, it's largely out of my control whether or not a motion is dismissed within the next thirty days.
Mr. Chairman, I move the table until the next, um, committee, or the next scheduled commission meeting in October.
Go ahead, Dave. Well, one, I would say that's, uh, the reverse of settlement, I've already backed off, and I've heard a whole lot of basically from Gocke, they're basically hugging, and they're, at the end of the day, like, we're, we're not going to pay the fee, we, we know that we don't have to, we're going to get away with it, that, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying to people. But, I, I would say it's interesting that, you know, your point, is it true?
Yeah.
You were saying, basically, we're, we're, Hawkins County's already a party in the lawsuit, but we don't have any representation, we don't have anybody pushing forward to the judge saying that, that this money, I understand what you're saying, but we'll wait till it's all over and then we'll get, we'll go, we'll file a motion for them to get the money to us, essentially what you're saying, but we're not going to, what benefit would we have? What do we have to lose to enter the lawsuit, let a judge decide and have representation? us. Essentially, that's what you're saying. But we're not going to, what benefit would we have, what do we have to lose to enter the lawsuit, let a judge decide and have representation, is from the very beginning? It's not, to be honest, if we were to hesitate and not join the lawsuit, what we would be doing would be showing favor to a giant entity of Hawkins County who's already got a lot of power. And it's like, we have absolutely nothing to lose. It's not a personal thing. Josh highlighted that very well. I don't know what more information we need to collect. It's a matter of principle. If it's 1,900 or 19,000, if they agree to pay a fee, and they're not doing that, the authority of Hawkins County is not being respected. And before it, it sets a terrible precedent. We have nothing to lose. So why, why would you suggest that we wait 30 more days? A little more information is there?
One issue, your statement that we're not represented is false. When we were served with the papers, I filed a notice of representation, a notice of appearance with the court. Hawkins County is represented. They're represented by myself on behalf of the county. The reason that we're, I'm suggesting that it may be better to wait and gather more information about possible outcomes and the duration is because you're talking about a contingency fee that may or may not, and I see no harm, I see no harm that I can think of, because this is not going to happen next 30 days, next 60 days. And I can file an answer and a cross claim tomorrow if that's what we decide to do. But I see no harm in waiting. I see a possible downside if it does have something happen where it settles. You've now given away 25% of your settlement, plus a significant part of those expenses of your settlement. That doesn't seem like it's right to take that risk. If you can simply say, I'm going to hold off and decide, again, it's nothing against Terry's law firm, Terry Longford. They are competent and capable of handling this. It's just my suggestion to the commissions, simply wait till you see additional information. Information I'm seeking is whether there's anything coming from Holston the next side. I think certainly Mr. Boyd's gotten an earful tonight. Perhaps there's some room for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I call for a question on Commissioner Roach's motion.
Okay, let's go ahead. Dane's had his hand.
I object.
I object also.
Object to what?
Object to the call for question.
Okay.
We're not going to debate on that.
Okay, so you confused me now. Are we, are we voting on?
No.
He called for question to vote on his motion. I objected to the call for question.
Okay.
So we need to vote on his-
Okay, you got to vote on the objection.
Whether you're opposed to it or not? Right.
Question.
We have voted on the motion.
This is yet-
We're not going to debate on that.
We're not debating.
Correct.
And then we get to the motion.
Does the call for question have to be second?
It was.
Doesn't.
No.
No.
Doesn't.
We need to vote on call for question?
No.
Vote on the objection.
And so we should be open to it. I do have a couple other points I could make before you vote on this, that I was hoping to make before this got to the point.
It would have been a tremendous amount of help if GM had been sitting in the office tonight to say, that shows you what kind of care you're-
I agree with your question.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, can you vote what a yes vote means and what a no vote means?
Whenever they get it rigged up here, I'll let you know.
Can I make one remark about, there was a mention earlier, there's lawsuits going on other places.
Go ahead, while I do this.
So there was a lawsuit going on against streaming services that did go to the Tennessee Supreme Court in 2022. It's titled City of Knoxville versus Netflix. The Tennessee Supreme Court says if you're a streaming service, which I'm not going to get into all the technical aspects of that, but if you're an over-the-top OTT streamer, then you don't have to pay franchise fees. Now, what that means is a practical matter is if you're providing TV service and you also own or operate lines in the public right-of-way, you've got to pay the franchise fee. Netflix does not operate any lines in the public right-of-way. Holson Electric does. It's the same business model that ATT, AT&amp;T, U-verse used to use, where they ran the fiber lines for telephone and then provided internet through that same fiber line. It's exactly what Holson Electric did. And in that Tennessee Supreme Court opinion, it says, plain as day, that if you own the lines, for example, like AT&amp;T, you have paid a franchise fee. So there are no, there's no other litigation anywhere else in the state that we're just waiting on the outcome from the Tennessee Supreme Court. That's been resolved and answered.
We need a second on the call, on the objection.
I did.
Dane.
Thank you.
Okay. So a yes vote on this means?
That he objects to the call for question. A no vote means it goes back to call for question.
So yes vote allows debate to continue. A no vote causes debate to end.
On the motion to table.
On the motion to table. Yes, that's the main question. Everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Yes, clear as mud.
Yes.
Keep talking.
Yes means you keep talking, no means you stop talking.
Yes.
Go ahead and vote.
10 yes, 4 no.
Okay, so we continue discussion, Dane?
I have a question for you, sir. So if I understand correctly, they were talking about how there was possibly, this will be dismissed in the near future. Would it not be strategically intelligent for Holston to apply pressure to the commission to say, back off, and then when it goes to the court, and there's less, there's less people in the lawsuit or making the claim, particularly the largest portion of the lawsuit, most applicable amount, with Hawkins County having the most claims to, would it not be more likely that a judge would look to dismiss it? Would that have any effect on that?
Well, I don't think the judge is going to look at the number of parties and be swayed by that, but it is important that Hawkins County is represented at that hearing.
So it's not a way out of thinking?
Yeah, it's just not. How many people are thought a lawsuit is going to affect my decision?
Commission Gillum.
Not too many years ago, before I was on the commission, we might have voted on one or two of these since I've been on here. I can't recall exactly. We've been given the opportunity to join in lawsuits against large drug companies. And never then did I hear anybody saying, you know what, let's just, let's put it off and see what happens, and we'll file a motion later to hopefully get the money after the judge makes a decision. And the reason is because that was an entity that we have nothing to do with. These, these folks are our friends and neighbors, and, and we don't want to, we don't want to do it because we're afraid it's going to make us look bad because of who, because of who Holson Electric is. Let's just say what it is. That's what, that's what it comes down to. That we feel like there's a lot of people that have influence that work there, and a lot of our friends work there, a lot of people like that work down there. And we just don't, we want to put it off and kick the can down the road, and maybe try to do something different, and this and that, until everybody forgets about it. And I understand it. I mean, it ain't, it ain't my favorite thing to talk about neither. But, you know, again, if you want to do it, vote for it. If you don't, vote against it. But there ain't no sense, we ain't going to know any more 30 days from now than we do tonight. And that's the truth.
And they're not going to settle, are going to randomly just start talking about settling here, they've had two months to do.
Sensational, actually.
Mr. Boyd.
I don't want to jump down his, or the argument.
That's all right. We'll just have court right here.
The issue is, still there's a decision by the Tennessee Supreme Court, that this is a streaming service or a video service. And, you know, that's got to be decided, because if they decide it's a video, I mean, a streaming service, there's not going to be a franchise fee. So that's the only thing I would argue about why it's a little bit premature to be acting with, voting on this at this point, because it's not an issue of money. It's an issue of the decision. It's got to be addressed somewhere down the road by other counties, one of which is going to appeal to the Supreme Court, and have that issue decided. That's, that's the issue. It's not how many people have joined in and how many people not, or where the, where it is on argument for the chancellor or whoever end up hearing it. You're saying the issue is, if it's decided that there's a streaming service, there's no, no, there's no franchise back. Let me say one other thing. Not a single one of the counties involved in this thing has ever passed ordinance or a resolution joining in this thing to determine whether or not they want to claim that this was a video, a, a streaming service. Nobody has ever done that. That's going to be another issue somewhere down the road. I'm just saying, it's, you're a little bit premature on this.
Commission.
And I appreciate the opportunity to be, to be heard again, because I don't want to, you know, edge into his time.
Mr. Parker.
I guess I'm a little confused. I think when you first talked to us, you said there was affidavit that he took to the state that he signed and agreed to pay-
And that's the point I was just about to bring up in response.
The franchise fee.
Yes.
So if he wouldn't, if Holson Electric wasn't required to sign a franchise fee, why would he have went to the state and done that? And why, and, and I'm sure the cost of that's been built in over, since 2017?
Well, they started building the lines around that time, but I think the service began late 2018, early 2019, but-
2020.
2020.
I looked at the paper earlier today that, that there were some parts in Rogersville in 2019.
So if there was, I mean, once again, if there's an affidavit signed, evidently somebody thought it was a necessity.
Yes.
And he bypassed the county commission to do that and went straight to the state. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And there's one issue in the lawsuit. Are they a video service provider or not? We've got an affidavit from Jimmy Sandlin that says, we're asking the TPUK, the Tennessee Public Utility Commission, to give us a franchise because we want to sell video services. And that was an affidavit. And the reason they did that is because you cannot sell TV in Tennessee until you come through the commission or you go through TPUK. Or there's enforcement mechanisms from the state where they come and shut you down. But there is not an enforcement mechanism for payment of the franchise fees. So they, they did step one, got permission from the state to sell it, but then they didn't follow through with what they were supposed to do, which is pay the counties and municipalities, which is they operate, I guess, thinking that no one would notice.
No resolution, no ordinance, that's a pure and simple fact.
If I could address that. So prior to 2008, if you wanted to sell TV service, you had to come to a county commission and negotiate the rate you were going to pay them. In 2008, they passed a law called the Competitive Cable and Video Services Act, and that's what this whole lawsuit is about. The provision that Mr. Boyd is talking about says if you're an incumbent service provider, which means you're providing cable, TV, video, whatever, before 2008, the county commission's got to pass a resolution, one way or the other, saying we want them to pay 5% that the state sets that rate, or we'll stick with the rate that we already negotiated with them directly under the local franchise. It's a non-issue. That's the, the least of the lawsuit. The only one question in this lawsuit is, is they, are they a video service provider or not? And again, we have an affidavit from Jimmy Sandlin saying that they are.
Mr. Havens.
My question's been answered, ladies. Thank you.
Mr. Thacker.
Call it quick.
All right.
So we're on a motion to postpone.
Yes. We are on a motion to postpone, not table.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for correcting me.
It's a motion to postpone until October.
Motion to postpone. Table will be taken up again at this point.
Motion to postpone, that's great. It's not table.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to postpone voting on this resolution until, did you, did you mention the date?
The next scheduled commission meeting in October.
Next scheduled commission meeting in October. You got that?
Yes.
Yet. We're working the ladies to death for that.
On the 28th.
On the 28th of October.
Yep.
Let me know when you're ready to vote. I must, Mr. Boyd and Mr. Parker, I appreciate you both coming tonight. This has been probably one of the most interesting discussions we've had as our mission. I mean, it's been long, but at least we're trying to learn something. Anybody on the commission, if you went to the concert in Knoxville last night and got home at 3 o'clock in the morning, needs to go to bed. Are we ready?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay. We understand what we're voting on.
Postponing to postpone.
Motion to postpone. Go ahead and vote.
Four yes, eight no, two abstain.
Okay, so that motion fails. We're back to the motion as presented on the resolution. Does anybody have any further discussion? Are you all ready to vote on 2024-09-07?
Hang on just a minute.
Okay, we're hanging.
All right, we got it.
Okay, go ahead and vote.
10 yes, 3 no, 1 abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all for the discussion. Really, I appreciate it. 2024-09-08, here due by Commissioner Gillum.
The Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission Regular Session, met this 23rd day of September 2024. Resolution and reference authorized the use of Skorontle Volunteer Fire Department for fire service coverage of Fitz Bend Industrial Park per the attached document of agreement. Whereas Fitz Bend Industrial Park requires a fire department that is capable of first response in case of fire or other emergency as required by industries in the park. And whereas through September 30th, 2024, that coverage was provided by Churchill Fire Department, which has opted not to continue to provide further first response coverage for Fitz Bend Industrial Park, with CHFB wishing to end their calendar year annual contract one quarter of a year early. And whereas the Skorontle Volunteer Fire Department has agreed to take on the responsibility of fire coverage beginning September 1st, 2024. Is that supposed to be October 1st, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That should be.
Sorry.
October 1st, 2024, and will respond first to fires within Fitz Bend Industrial Park. And whereas the Skorontle Volunteer Fire Department has sufficient fire protection rating, provide such coverage and a physical station very near the entrance to the park. Now therefore, be it resolved that per the attached agreement, the Skorontle Volunteer Fire Department will receive 25,000 per calendar year over and above their annual contribution from Hawkins County to provide this fire protection. The amount to be reviewed each subsequent year during the budgeting process. And now, be it further resolved that County Mayor Mark DeWitt be given the authority to sign and execute the attached agreement with the Skorontle Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Chairman, I saw moving.
Motion from Commissioner Gillum, second from Commissioner Britton. Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, is this an indefinite decision, or is this reviewed like on yearly basis?
Says it's reviewed annually. Commissioner Alvis.
Yes, over a paragraph, where it says, it is agreed that this ordinance appropriation 25,000 shall cease and terminate at such time as the agreement is terminated and in accordance with the above. If contract is terminated prior to the end of the quarter, any unearned funds received must be remitted back to Hawkins County Industrial Board. The 25,000 shall be in addition to any other money to pay to the party, whatever.
Right.
I don't think it needs to go back to the industrial board. If, if something was to happen in a quarter that just started, and that, there's that $25,000, why would it go to the industrial board, period?
Do you want to just strike the words industrial board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's an amendment that we'll need to vote on.
So it must be, you want to take out, any unearned received must be remitted back to Hawkins County?
To Hawkins County.
Yes.
Sorry.
Because of general fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
So that is a motion to move.
Yes.
And what is to say?
We're hanging.
And whose is the second on that call?
John. It was, Danny, it was worded that way in the old agreement with- It was, Danny was worded that way in the old agreement with Churchill. That's where it got stuck in there. It's fine, we can move it. All right.
All right, we're ready to vote on motion to amend.
This is voting on the amendment, taking out the industrial board, the words "industrial board."
Larry.
Fourteen yes.
All right, we've amended the resolution to strike those words. Now we're back on discussion on the amendment, on the motion, on the resolution as amended. Mr. Barrett.
Okay, my question kind of follows along with what Commissioner Alvis was asking about. I'm a little confused as to the relationship between Saginaw Fire Department, County Commission, and the Hawkins County Industrial Board. Seems to me like the agreement is between, or should be between Saginaw City and Hawkins County Commission. So if Hawkins County Industrial Board is in fact supposed to be a second party to the agreement, then if you go back when Fitzbin was set up, I believe it was through a joint venture with the City of Kingsport. So if Hawkins County Industrial Board is a party to providing fire service or to the contracts of providing fire service to Fitzbin, then would not the City of Kingsport also need to be added into the agreement?
What's your thought?
I'm familiar with, I'm not familiar with the joint agreement initially when it was established. What you're telling me is that it was established as a joint venture between the City of Kingsport-
And Hawkins County.
And Hawkins County.
Yes.
Then they were, you know, interested parties certainly, which should probably be included in it.
Correct.
I suggest perhaps we could postpone.
We can. The challenge of this is they're going, we need to be-
Oh, that's right.
Have something in place by October 1.
Right. Well, you certainly have the parties that, necessary parties, you've got one missing. But because of the time crunch, I would advise that you still perhaps proceed with the agreement if we have to do an amendment to the agreement, which I'm sure all the parties would agree to.
Okay. That satisfied you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gillum.
Yeah, that was just going to be my suggestion. We could pass it to avoid a lapse in fire coverage at the industrial park, and then we can submit an amendment to the agreement next month.
Considered. Yeah. I'll talk to the Kingsport mayor and see what they want to do about it. Anybody else? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
All right, ten yes, one abstain.
All right, 2024-09-09 introduced by Commissioner Roach.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission and Regular Session met this 23rd day of September 2024. Resolution reference renewal of customer service agreement with UniFirst for cleaning supplies and mats for a 36-month term beginning November 2nd, 2024. Whereas Hawkins County utilizes UniFirst for various cleaning supplies and floor mats and is currently under a customer service agreement that expires November the 2nd, 2024. And whereas Hawkins County has negotiated a new 36-month customer service agreement with UniFirst at a cost of $5,343 per year resulting in a savings of $2,308.80 over the current annual rate, a copy of which is attached to the resolution. Whereas the agreement states that the rate can only increase at a maximum of 5% each year. And whereas Hawkins County has made price comparisons for the same service with the closest competitor being $1,430 more per year. And whereas this, without this agreement, Hawkins County would pay $1,075.88 per year more to maintain our current service level. Now therefore be it resolved that County Mayor Mark DeWitt be given the authority to sign the 36-month customer service agreement as attached to this resolution. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Britton. Any questions or comments? Mr. Barrett.
So I got put up all my questions tonight. Okay. Okay. The issue I've got on the resolution, it mentions that the rate can only increase at a maximum of 5% each year. When I looked at the fine print over there that says customer service agreement terms, if you would look down on paragraph five, if I understand that particular paragraph-
How on earth can you read that?
Okay.
I don't have my magnifying glass.
Okay. The point I want to make is in paragraph five, if I've looked at it correctly, it talks about a minimum of 5%. It also mentions, I think it's referred to as a consumer price index or something like that. But the contract reads they have the option of whichever is greater, okay? I want to bring that point out. And then the other issue that I have on the UniFirst customer service agreement that kind of towards the bottom right-hand corner, there's a, looks like a D E F E charge fixed, that's like $3.89. Then below that, there's an energy charge of $2.25. Going back to page two of the customer service agreement terms, if you looked at paragraph number seven, it explains what the D E F E charges are in paragraph seven. So based off of the description there in paragraph seven, it appears to me that they're duplicating energy charges. But basically, to me, it looks like they're double, they're double charging.
Where's are they charging energy charges?
Well, in the description there in paragraph seven, it breaks down each one of those letters, what they stand for.
Right.
Okay. And it appears to me that the energy charge is covered in the line item above there. Okay. And the other issue I've got, if in fact, if they're going to limit the amount of the increase to a maximum of 5%, then they need to initial it up there in paragraph five. It needs to be initial, it needs to be signed off of or notated or something on the contract.
Correct. If you want to postpone this, we can make those changes and vote on it in October meeting.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that. Mr. Barrett, one thing in that paragraph that you're referencing about the price increase, it does say that any price increase that they may impose upon us, we can deny within 10 days of receipt of notice and determination of that contract could be, you know, they could terminate the contract with us if we didn't want to pay. So it's not like we're mandated to pay it. If they were to give us an increase, we would have an out within 10 days of written notice.
Okay. Would we be required to pay the difference in the contract if we, basically if we defaulted on the contract?
So if I'm reading correctly, if I may, I'll read from the paragraph. Prices are based on 52 weeks of service a year. Any increase to service frequency could result in additional charges. On an annual basis, the prices then in effect will be increased by the greater of the annual percent increase in the consumer price index, all urban consumers, other goods and services, or by five and a half percent. Additional price increases and other charges may be imposed by separate written notice or by notation on the customer's invoice. That's when they tell us the prices are going up. Customer may however decline such additional increases or charges by notifying UniFirst and writing within 10 days after the receipt of such notice or notation. If customer declines said additional price increases, UniFirst may terminate this agreement. Customer also agrees to pay the other charges, a minimum weekly charge here in specified. So the only thing that I see right there is that UniFirst may terminate the agreement if we don't agree to the price increase. That's the way I read it, but then I would need our attorney to confirm that. But I'm happy to pull it if you want to wait until next month.
Okay, probably, if it's okay to the rest of the commission, yeah. I think we ought to at least pull it and get some clarification on it.
I want to postpone it yet?
Uh, postpone it.
Okay. Would you put that in form of a motion?
I'll make that in form of a motion to postpone the resolution until next month to get more information on it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Rob.
Okay. Just a second.
Ready to vote? Okay. This is to postpone this resolution until next month's meeting.
Eleven yes, three no.
All right, postpone until next month. Thank you. 2024-09-11, Commissioner Roach.
Ten.
Ten?
Ten, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm flipping pages too quick.
It's okay.
You'd think I'd have walked to the concert last night.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission and Regular Session met this 23rd day of September 2024. Resolution reference approval to submit application and accept upon award a fiscal year 25 Tennessee Corrections Institute Training Equipment Grant with no local matching funds in the amount of $15,000 for the sheriff's office. Whereas the Tennessee Corrections Institute makes available grants to local sheriff's offices for the purchase of correction personnel, training equipment in their county. Whereas the Hawkins County Sheriff's Office intends to apply with no local match required and for the purpose of correction personnel training and has been awarded the grant, there is no local match. Therefore be it resolved that approval be given to submit an application and accept the aforementioned grant with County Mayor Mark DeWitt authorized to execute the application, contract, and any other necessary documents required to signify acceptance of said grant. And therefore be it further resolved that approval be given for the following budget amendment to the General Fund 101. That would be an increase in revenue in 101-46980, other state grants jail, to show $15,000, and increase expenditure 54210716 under law enforcement equipment at $15,000. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a motion from Commissioner Roach, second, Commissioner Gibson. Any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and vote.
Thirteen yes, one abstain.
All right, now 2024-09-11, Commissioner Roach.
Resolution reference budget amendment, general fund. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay. We wait till we get the screen up here. Number eleven. All right, that says 09-12 up there.
Yeah, we're fixing.
Second by Robbie Palmer, yes. Mr. Alvis.
Yes, sir?
I have a couple of things. One, on this $2,000, I thought we were going to make it two months without more money in the airport, but we're not going to. And overall, the pertaining clerk of master, and I'm glad he's here tonight, if he can enlighten us on this, when we pay this $5,900, who does this property belong to? And what is their timeframe on getting it back? And who's liable if anybody gets hurt on it?
So at the, at the last tax sale, there's two parcels didn't sell. So at that time, the county put in a bid for the judgment of mail. So there's a one-year redemption period that the property owners can redeem the property. If they don't redeem it, then the county will be the official owner of it. During the year's redemption period, the county does have the right to sell the property subject to the right of redemption. So at the end of the redemption period, if nobody redeems it and becomes the county, there'll be an order put down to pack it off the tax row until it's sold again. So I guess the responsibility or liability to it, Mr. Cap will probably explain that better, but I would assume it would be the county's responsibility if someone was to get hurt or something on that property at that point.
And when you advertise, you run this through the Rochester Review, correct?
Correct. We have to, by statute, it has to be 20 days prior to the sale, has to be advertised without the property.
Is there a minimum that they have to put in on this?
Yeah, it's got to be for the entire judgment of mail, which is the property tax, has to be property taxes that's in our office, plus any court fees and attorney fees to it. Now there are still taxes with the trustee's office that are delinquent that's not been turned over to us, and with the municipalities too, that would need to be taken care of as well.
Who will object, the route to?
It'll be made to the clerk of master's office, and then if the trustee and the municipality would have to be paid too. Now our money at the end of the month will be turned back over to the trustee, which I guess in turn goes back to the general fund. So you're basically paying yourself on our portion of it.
So what property were we talking about, I missed?
There was two properties. One of them, I believe, was Independence Avenue and Mount Carmel. The other was off of Reno Street, back behind where the pub development was a few years ago, never got completed. It's part of that property.
Commissioner Alvis, you got your questions answered.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Barrett.
Well, I may be just a little bit confused on here. But what resolution are we discussing right now?
09-11.
09-11, okay. Okay, good. I've got a question about number eleven. Okay. There on the airport, second involved in airport, says the above increase in maintenance and repair buildings is needed to purchase paint and supplies for painting the airport hangars. This increase is funded by a transfer within the airport budget. No new monies will be needed. So the question I've got, I went back and looked at the airport lease agreements that was voted on back in July. And my first question is, is all of the airport hangars that's up there currently under lease?
Some are under lease, some belong to the county, and we're painting the county ones. And I need to mention that this costs us 5% of this. We're reimbursed 95% of this amount from that grant that we approved last month.
Okay. Is the hangars that's needing to be painted, are they occupied or are they vacant?
They're occupied and leased.
They're leased.
From us.
Okay. The point, the point I want to make then is if you go back and look at the July lease agreements, it states that the leasing, which is the renter, shall be solely responsible for payment of any and all costs associated with any utilities connected-
We're reimbursed 95% of this amount from that grant that we approved last month.
Okay, is the hangars that's needing to be painted, are they occupied or are they vacant?
They're occupied and leased.
They're leased.
From us.
Okay, the point I want to make then is if you go back and look at the July lease agreements, it states that the leasing, which is the renter, shall be solely responsible for payment of any and all cost associated with any utilities connected to the hangar, including all incidental cost of installation, usage, and repair.
That's utilities, Commissioner Barrett. They're paying utilities.
They're paying the utilities?
Yes.
I agree with that, okay? What about where it says incidental cost of installation?
Installation of utilities. Installation of the utilities.
Okay.
That's all one paragraph.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna shred the agreement then, because I was thinking that the paint should be covered under the rental agreement.
We've painted it two, three times over the last 30 years.
Well, we painted our... We painted the main hangar. But these are the hangars that reverted back to the county. They're ours, we're gonna paint them, they're there. But as I said, that's only gonna cost us 5% of the $2,000 to do that.
I'm gonna shred the paragraph. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
Thirteen yes, one no.
All right, that resolution passes, 2024-09-12.
To the Honorable Mark Dewitt, Chairman and Member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissions in Regular Session met the 23rd day of September 2024. Resolution in reference general purpose school fund budget amendment. Whereas the Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amendments to the general purpose school fund and now requests approval of said amendment by the Hawkins County Board of Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hawkins County Board of Commission meeting in regular session September 23rd, 2024, go on record as passing this resolution. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Barker, second, Commissioner Gibson, any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
Thirteen yes, one abstain.
That resolution passes, 2024-09-13, Commissioner Gibson.
Motion to approve the other calls.
We've got a motion to approve all of the notaries. Uh, is there a second? Well, who's second? Hold your horses over at Palmer. I know, but you know, we gotta do this one. All right, go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, who adjourns?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion to adjourn in a second. Go ahead and vote.